Okay, let's start with roll call. Bob will start with you today.
Bob Wyatt.
Paula Rakestraw.
Vicki McKinney.
Vicki Alston.
Kimberly McMichael.
Philip Butler.
Brent Hutz.
The next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, July the 8th, 2024. The meeting begins at 6 o'clock at Central Administrative Offices located at 511 Harrington Highway, Eden, North Carolina. Access the latest agendas from Rockingham County Board of Education by visiting www.rockk12.ncus/BoardOfEducation and clicking on Board Meeting Agendas. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move on to the action items. Ms. Ellis, Budget Amendments?
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Stover. Today, we present to you for approval our year-end budget amendments. So this is the point in the year where we take a look at all of our funds and we make sure that we maximize our state funding. So we want to make sure that any money that is to revert back to the state on Sunday is spent. The first budget amendment is state. Do you want me to walk through each one? Or no? Ms. Rakestraw did send some questions prior to the meeting, so we can go through those. But I just want to briefly touch each fund real quick. Local, we are, we didn't increase it or decrease it, but we're looking at each funding source and make sure that we have enough budgeted in line items to cover the expenses. So a lot of it is just shifting budget amounts around to make sure that when the auditors come in, we have a clean audit. We don't have any line items that have more expenses than budget. Federal, we pretty much take exactly what the directors place into CCIP through DPI as their budget for their federal grants, and we make sure that those amounts match our ledger. Capital outlay, that is similar to local. It carries over, but we're pretty much true up the same as local. School food service, enterprise fund, special fund is our school aid, childcare, looking at revenues and expenses. Fund eight, a restricted fund or grants. Okay, so let's see. Paula's questions. Do you want me to just, do you want to ask them, Ms. Rakestraw?
It's fine. Yeah, I was just, I was trying to save a little time, y'all. So of the, speaking specifically about the capital fund, right, Fund Four, of the amount of money that the, our commissioners has earmarked, I guess, so to speak, because we haven't gotten all of that money, it's more of a reimbursement, right?
Correct.
And so of that, it looked like we've only spent $140,000 of that. Is that right? Or no?
Hold on.
Help me with that.
I'm trying to.
And then I was wondering how much of the work we have in contract. Yeah, Ms. Young, say it again. Nope.
Okay, so for capital?
For $140,000.
On that first page, are you talking about this $136,000 right here? Okay, so when?
Is that extra?
That is us allocating revenue to that line item to show this is what we anticipate to receive from the county in addition to what we've already received. So overall this year, we've spent about $718,000 for those 23, 24 projects.
Okay.
But this budget amendment is just allocating additional revenue that we expect to receive to balance out our revenues and expenses on our, in our, on our ledger. So it's not necessarily, that's not showing you what we, that's not the only thing we spent this year.
Oh, okay.
Just when we did the initial budget, we didn't have enough in revenue to cover the amount of expenses that we've paid out. So this is a true-up to that.
So how much do we actually have in contract, do you know?
When you say contract, what do you mean by that?
Under contract, that we are actually getting work done.
That is going to be a great question for Ms. Bray and Ms. Young. They keep up with that very well. So if you don't mind?
She can get that.
I will, I will get with her and we'll get you a detailed listing of where we're at with each project.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, and then under?
I would say that some of the projects that we've had, for instance, I'll be coming to you, for instance, the track at Donald McMichael. Some of those things have not been invoiced, but we know that we have that money available and then we'll ask for the refund. So it's, it's kind of a lull in between, isn't it?
Sure. Okay, thank you. And then under Fund Two, I was just curious about how our substitute, how the permanent sub program compared to our actual expenditures in the past and currently to substitute pay. So does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
And I don't know if you have that information today. I know.
Right. I looked at it this morning. Based off the ledger this year, we've spent $1.1 million in local sub cost. That does include benefits for those subs. So that's running a listing of all subs paid from local for sick pay, staff development, and when a TA subs for a teacher. So that's pretty much gonna, that's pretty much an all-inclusive list of whenever you would need a sub. Last year, running those same object codes in local, it was $1 million. So we've increased about $100,000 from last year. Permanent subs are on top of that. So they're paid from S R funding. This year, we ended the year with about $1 million spent from S R funding for our, our permanent subs. So essentially, you're paying for subs plus permanent subs this school year, even though it was S R funding. That funding is going away. We will not have those permanent subs next year. So it'll be, you know, interesting to see how.
And we need to work at what that allocation looks like for next year too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then on Fund One, I was just, well, you answered Fund One, why it's called special? It's our school wage. And then on?
Fund Six. That, Fund One is state.
Okay, maybe I got, maybe I got.
I think it's, I think it's Budget Amendment Six.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
That's fun, yeah. That's fun. That states.
Okay. And?
The 273.
Yeah. And why did we have $273,000 moved from that, from fund balance to that? Because, is it, is it because we're not, we're matching money? Is it matching money for grants and that's what?
Well, the school, this is our, Fund Six is our, by foreign after-school childcare fund. And this year, or this year and last year, they received stabilization grant money from the state. So if you look on the second page of that budget amendment, the 273 you're asking about, we're allocating that as fund balance from that fixed cost stabilization grant. So we've got that money, yes.
Money that's been brought in.
Yes, we have a certain amount of time that we need to spend that. So if you look right above that line item, we had originally put in the budget amendment for regular revenue, like from tuition, from students. So, I'm sorry, that's wrong, not regular, regular revenue from that grant. So this budget amendment is taking, it is decreasing the revenue from that grant and allocating it as fund balance because technically this is money we've carried over from last year that we need to spend.
But it's earmarked specifically for that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There are certain things, we, we can only spend that on certain things.
And then on Budget Amendment Twelve, I think that was my last question. It looks like we've allocated a little over a million dollars to restricted fund. Again, is this a result of matching, matching, or are we overspending on those grants?
On that second page, on the revenue page for Fund Eight, you can see each individual grant where we're allocating, decreasing, or increasing. The two largest are 83700306 and 84910306. That's our EC Medicaid money. So we are increasing our expected revenue from Medicaid, or our, the revenue we receive from Medicaid, by $578,000. And we're also increasing, because this money, that's money that the EC department carries over each year as they bill for Medicaid, and that money can only be spent for EC.
So again, it's earmarked specifically for that program?
Yes, ma'am. So we had a few salary exceptions with EC teachers that we can't pay with their EC state money. So they're able to use this restricted money to cover those salary exceptions. So they're allocating an additional $485,000 from their fund balance of Medicaid to cover those expenses. So that's something that, you know, we, we need to watch as well as salary exceptions.
Yeah, because we're going to continue to need those teachers and we're going to continue to need that additional money and we're not getting that. And that, that plays into the same argument that we've been having about the 13% versus the 17%, I think, with, with identifying our EC population. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Thank you for asking the question around the capital money because I think what we continue to hear from the county is that we've worked to appropriate the 46 million and they feel like we're not moving through those PEGO, those PEGO things as quickly as they thought we would. So thank y'all for clarifying where we are in the.
Ms. Young, do you want to say something?
That is, the 46 million is a five-year plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So it is broken out into years and right now, we are working on as far as the, which one did you question, the PEGO or the debt service?
No, I just said, I appreciated her asking the question because we do get questions about why we're not moving through some of those projects faster. I know it's a five-year plan.
Right. And we have that prioritization list and we've shared all of our projects with them as well. We are working on every single project that's on that list for the 20, for 24 years.
I also heard you say that some of those things had not been, I'm not sure the word you used, but build, they've not, we've not been invoiced for them. So I think that's, that's some of the difference too. And stuff just takes a while.
And I think one of our biggest expenses is going to be our roofs, and you know how long that takes?
Yes.
To do that whole process. So I think we'll probably in the next couple of years, move at much faster pace.
I feel like we've been replacing the roof at Red School since I've been on the board, so it does take a while.
Would you like for us to have, we are having a finance committee meeting on July the 8th. Would you like for us to maybe have an update ready for you of where we're at with these projects?
Ms. Young has a list.
Okay.
And it has whether or not they've been completed.
Okay.
Where we are in the process. I just wanted to point it out for the public.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you were talking about regarding the questions.
I was really, oh goodness. I was really referring to your, I mean, I just want to make sure that, you know, you have the information that you need.
Right, thank you.
Overall, there's really, I mean, these are pretty standard budget amendments. I feel confident in them. They are really, with our transition to LINK, it's been challenging, but I really do like our new system. Once we figured it out, it's a lot easier to process budget amendments than within our old system. So I look forward to a nice year next year with doing this and not having your eyeball.
Without the transition.
Yeah, exactly. But overall, I feel good about these.
Could you hear anything else? Can we have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, thank you. Okay, workers' compensation insurance?
Okay, at our last meeting on June 10th, we brought the Airs and Emissions General Liability Insurance invoice as well as the Fleet Auto invoice. We did not have the workers' compensation actual invoice amount at that time. So we do now. So today's request is your approval of our workers' comp invoice. And the total that we are to pay by the end of this school year is $339,438.
Any questions?
That is a decrease from last year.
Do we have a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, Madam Chair. I need to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, budget requests from county commissioners?
Good morning, Board Members. I hope you're having an excellent start to the morning. Last, a last meeting, we presented to you our possible options for a one-time increase from our county commissioners. And we are, after getting feedback, we're going to continue with the recommendation of Option A. And we'd like your approval to go to the county commissioners at their next meeting and ask for Option A for $340,033.
Any questions?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to point out that of the options that are on this sheet, that is the only option that the commissioners would be willing to fund. They were not willing to, and I said this in the last board meeting, but just for anybody listening for today, they are not willing to combine any of the other options. It was either two APs, two counselors, or the behavioral health specialist. And we have been informed that the people who are serving as the behavioral health specialist, although those actual positions are no longer funded due to unstable, we just don't have stable funding for them. They've lost their, the director has, has, is no longer with us.
Yes, ma'am. She moved to another job. She's still here.
Right, and so, right, she's still, right, yeah, she's still here on earth, but she is no longer with Rockingham County Schools. And due to that, the recommendation from staff was that we still have these individuals who serve as our behavioral health specialist. They are going into other positions such as guidance counselors, maybe social worker. Did I hear someone's moved into a social worker position? And I can't remember what the other two might have been. But we still, we still have those people who we value very much in our district. But the commissioners did not offer to fund any formulation that we came up with. It was either or. And I also understood, and this was sort of new to me, we're not getting two more assistant principals and two more guidance counselors. What they're willing to fund is paying, allowing us to hang on to four.
Exactly.
Individuals that we would otherwise not have.
Exactly. One, for instance, one of the things is we were going to share a counselor between South End and Lincoln, and instead, both schools will have a full-time counselor. So we very much appreciate the county commissioner's support and willingness to consider this request for our, for us. And it'll help us to, give us a full year to figure out things and make sure that we have the right people in the right places serving our students. This is always our focus.
And I understand those guidance counselors are going to the schools with the largest student bodies. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we're keeping, we're keeping the guidance, the counselors that we have currently this year. They're going to stay.
We really do want to thank the county commissioners for their additional funding this year. That's going to help so much with the next school year.
And I think it's worth pointing out that they've never been, they've never gone back and amended their budget for us or any other department that they serve. So we really do appreciate that.
It's great. We appreciate it so much. Do we have a motion to approve the additional budget request?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion that we approve Option A for the budget request, the additional budget amendment for the county commissioners.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. We came together this morning to talk about our goals for the Facilities Committee. And Ms. Young and Dr. Stover and Ms. Rakestraw and Ms. McMichael have served on that committee, and they have worked on a plan to maybe gather data for our county commissioners so we can move forward with, with a plan. So we're here this morning to talk about the plan that they're going to present with data. Are you going to do that this morning, Dr. Stover?
Well, so I was just going to go over kind of where we were with everything. Ms. Rakestraw put together a document, and I believe. This is it, yes. And there's a couple of, some directions on where the board would like us to go. For A, we have been in touch with, I've spoken with or communicated with three different providers. Unfortunately, Ms. Rakestraw, we were not able to get the proposals in today by the time, which I didn't think we were. But all three, at least three, are providing us with proposals, and we'll get those to you as soon as we get them. Or Ed, I was able to communicate with Mr. Dudley. He came back from vacation, was very quick in answering. I spoke with Matthew Cropper from, and then also a new person, LaFries, Todd LaFries, who does this. So we just want to get as many. We're going to reach out to a couple more. I have a couple more names, but those are the ones that, at least the first two were the ones that we had, had gotten proposals from before. And so they're giving proposals. And I was able to speak with each of them to kind of say what we're trying to hope to get. Okay? And, and, and kept on reinforcing speed is what we're going for, for some of this. I actually said to them that if we could do the first part, which is kind of the projections for the next five to 10 years, in a rough redistricting overview, that would be ideal, if we could do that. And then we could get into the more minutia of the redistricting.
Does Mr. LaFries, does he have experience with redistricting?
Yes, he does. He was the Assistant Superintendent of Operations Chapel Hill, and they do redistricting quite a bit.
And I would just like to clarify, I didn't do this all by myself.
Oh, no, and I'm sorry.
Ms. McMichael and I discussed this.
So I should have said the Facilities Committee members.
Yeah, there you go.
I apologize. And then we also, and so we'll work on getting to the C, which is the options that the committee wants. Additionally, we sent to you a survey, a Google survey with questions that the committee came up with. And we, we have that for you so that you can fill that out. If you want to just handwrite it, we can put it into the survey ourselves for you as well. And then that way, the Facilities Committee has the information needed. Is there anything you want to add on that, Ms. Rakestraw or Ms. McMichael?
Well, I just want to say something about those questions. So some of those questions, I don't think the board's going to be able to answer. Like, for instance, the formula question. I mean, that was a question of what is, I mean, we need somebody else to tell us.
Okay.
What that formula is. And I'm assuming it'll be whoever we'll be working with, or?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know. And, and did, and did any of those three give you a timeline as when you could expect that proposal to come in?
Yeah, I'm expecting it to come in by the end of this week.
By the end of this week? Okay, that's good.
Yeah. I think Mr. Cropper said today or tomorrow was his goal. I think LaFries, same thing. Or Ed, they cannot start the work until 25.
Okay.
At best. So they might have, again, I reiterated the, the speed, and they'll more than likely be the most economical. But then it's a choice of speed versus cost.
And I guess they understand, I mean, because what I'm understanding from economic development is that we have the data. We just need their, their perspective on trends, historical trends, projection trends. I don't know if that's how you say that or not. But that's what we're needing from a group like Orient. Because I was like, why in the world do we need that contract with somebody? But that helped me understand why we needed to do this.
That's right. Their perspective and their timing expertise.
Right.
They have, they, they just focus on these types of things and they do it all the time. And, you know, just like you go to a surgeon, you'd rather have the surgeon that does 1,000 procedures than the one that's done 10.
Right. And so, and then my other question would be around the fact that, you know, I know we're discussing having, rescheduling those meetings that, that we had postponed or, and so my concern is if we have those meetings, yet we're collecting this information, is it not going to be more beneficial to have those meetings once we've collected the information and have some kind of perspective of what the redistricting would look like? I don't know. I'm just trying to play it all out in my brain, and I just think that we're putting the cart before the horse, maybe?
There you go.
Is that the word?
That's exactly what I said. I feel like we put the cart before the horse.
And I'm all for us having community meetings, absolutely, because we need all of our community's input. But we also need to have data so that our community can help, so that they can see what kinds of issues we're facing and what, why we're making some of the decisions we're making and why we're even looking at some of the decisions that, or options that are there. Does that make sense?
I have a whole different perspective, and it's because I've been in education for a long time, and I've seen how this works. I feel like, like Ms. Rakestraw said, we're putting the cart before the horse. We're going to these meetings with nothing, with nothing. As the superintendent of Rockingham County Schools, it is your responsibility to get with us or the Facilities Committee, and you hammer out what the plan should be. If you think that we need to build a new school, and we build it using South End, because that's what we've all talked about, if you feel like it needs to be built right there on that location, then you come to this board with a plan and say, we're going to build South End in the area that it's in. This kids will, you tell us how the kids will be dispersed. And yes, we do need community input, but exactly what do they know about forming a school and what you have to have in that school? And I know what you're going to hear, it's going to be, I want this, I want this, I want this. Well, you can't give them that. The only thing we can give the, the public is the knowledge that we have as to what our students need, not what they need or what they want. We're not serving them. We're serving the students of Rockingham County Schools. Yes, they are our constituents, but they have put us on this board for a reason. And that reason is to use the knowledge we have to make the best decisions for these kids. And I feel like if we go to these schools one more time, we're going to be eat up like we were before. And I, for one, will not do it. I feel like that Mrs. Rakestraw and Mrs. McMichael did this. I think we should follow this to the letter. And until we get all these suggestions on here, I say do not go forward until we have the data that says we need to build here and this is what we're going to do. As the superintendent, I feel like you have to be concise. You have to make a plan, stand by that plan, and sell it to the community. That's just how I feel. And I don't know how the rest of these people feel, but I feel like we're wasting our time. We're beating our heads against the wall when we need more information to even come close to making a decision.
I agree.
So that's where I stand.
I agree with that. We really need the data. When we went into South End, we didn't have the data to really, those four options that were put on the boards, we really didn't have the data to support. I don't know how we came up with those without the, the data that we needed to do it. So I think we need to be really informed when we go into these meetings again. And I don't think by July, we're going to be ready to do this without, and the last five-year plan, wasn't it also that Mall Street was not under our umbrella at that point? So that made South End very crowded. So therefore, that's going to change a lot now. I mean, our numbers are going to change. So things are, you know, we just need the data.
So we were basing it on our '22, or Ed presented a report, I believe, in August of '22. And I, when we worked with him, I think we told them that we were looking to take back Mall Street. And so they did give us a recommendation that is what, the basis of what I followed. I think the thing for me as the superintendent is, my first understanding is I would need to go through the Facilities Committee before I made any recommendations. And then, and so I just need clear direction, because I can do either or.
So can I speak?
That's what we need to decide.
Can I speak? Okay, so when, when our board is saying that they had no idea what was in those options, when that, when that is brought to the agenda, at the very least, the chair and the board chair should know what's going on the agenda, and they should know what they've asked a board member to amend. they've asked a board member to amend the agenda to add. So I understand that it didn't happen that way, that y'all weren't given that clarity. But I also said I was going to point that out if it got said out loud again. So there. We, I mean, the opportunity to know what's going on the agenda and what's been discussed was there. We all have been given, it's called the school capital funding thing. We were all given that in the fall of last year. I have asked Ms. Young if she will talk with us about maybe looking at and giving y'all access to the scorecards so that you can see how she's ranking all of the different things. Because even as Facility Committee members, if a roof starts leaking, they aren't calling us to say, hey, how do you feel if we put this leaking roof above a safety vestibule, or above cameras? Or, I mean, we, as a board, are trusting that staff is going to be able to prioritize some of those most immediate needs. So as a Facilities Committee, that committee belongs to the county side, and we are just participating in it. So they have given us guidance as to how the money will free up, and when we will be able to have funding available to apply for a lottery grant, or to apply for any sort of debt service. All of that is in the school capital funding discussion materials that was put together for us by Davenport. So the information that Ms. Rakestraw typed up after we had some discussion basically just says that our feeder schools are, you know, that y'all said last, in the last meeting, that Monroton, 10% of Monroton goes to, goes to Reevesville High School, and the rest of those kids are either going to Bethany Charter or they're going to Reevesville Middle. So it makes, so I suggested, it makes more sense to me that if only 10% of Monroton is going to Reevesville, then after talking about all of the social, emotional, and friendships, and connections, and how that feeds into mental health, all of those kids should stay together and feed Rock Middle, Rock High. And that's not going to be an issue for them, because they are not, they are the larger schools, but they're not at capacity. So we've made recommendations. But Ms. McKinney, I hear you saying that we've been elected to make good decisions, but the Facility Committee can't just make all of those decisions by ourselves. We have to bring it to the board.
That's what I meant. The board has been elected to oversee the, our constituents and our schools. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I understood you saying that you thought Dr. Schaver should bring all of that stuff to us. So the other thing we've been discussing is that, and guys, I'm sorry to say it like this, but we thought South End sat on eight acres of land based off of that previous five-year plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what the commissioners were saying was, we don't want to build a great big school on eight acres of land when the state recommendation, and it is a recommendation, not a law, when the state recommendation is for 20 acres. Now, there are, there are other things added to those recommendations. Like, if you're in, within a municipality, you could have less than 10 acres, but they want you to have an additional acre for every 100 students, right?
Right.
So even with that information, South End didn't, with eight acres, didn't meet that requirement. So they were willing to see if you could find an additional plot of land that would be larger, which would just be beneficial to the kids. To build a new South End. That's sort of how all of that discussion went. As far as the last community discussion and not having any, I think that we've also heard from Mall Street that they don't want to feel like they've not been given the opportunity to voice any concern, or to ask any more questions before we move forward. The first meeting was held at South End, and whether we, I do think that we learned a lot from that very first presentation, and that we now know how to go in and discuss this differently than the first one was handled. And I believe Dr. Schaver is not planning on conducting the Mall Street meeting the exact same. But I would suggest that we not cancel that meeting, and not make that, that school feel like that their concerns aren't respected, or that we don't want to hear from them at all. Even though you're right, we do need more information going forward. I think as board members, we have to expect to have a lot of meetings similar to this, and to be very transparent with the public and with each other, in hearing what the community, what the communities have to say. And then we'll also be traveling, like, towards Eaton, and we'll have to sell to the rest of the county what each community needs.
Because the redist, when we redistrict, it's going to affect the entire county. And so maybe it would be beneficial to have that meeting, like you're suggesting, and let them know that this is, this is the process, we're going to go about doing it, what kinds of things are they wanting us to consider. Because I agree, I mean, it's, you know, when we, I don't know if the meeting was canceled or postponed, but whatever way it was, if I would have been a Mall Street parent, I would have felt like sort of a slap in the face, well, they didn't hear what I had to say. Or what I have to say is not as important. I don't, that's what I would have felt like. Now, we know that there were issues around that now, and that's been stated, but I think we do need to, whatever we're going to do, and however we're going to do it, this was just a proposal of how to go about it, right? But if this is the process we're going to go, if we're going to follow it to the T, then we need to let all of our community know, this is what we're doing, and this is how we're doing it. And this is who we're doing it with, right? It'd be great to know who we're doing it with.
I've got two things. I've got two things. If we're going to do this, which I know we are, then I think, and I don't, they probably don't agree with me, but I think that the first thing we need to do before we do any of this other stuff is start the process to redistrict, because that's going to change the numbers in each school. And we know that to be a fact. I know it for sure over in Eaton. So I think that's the first thing we need to do before we go throwing out all these options and asking the people what they want. We need to go to them and say, we need to redistrict, and this is why. We've got to get our schools more, more in line with the number of people we have. And that's just my thought. Then the second thing I want, and this is for somebody to clarify to me, what is the difference between our Facilities Committee and this other Facilities Committee that the county commissioners sat on? Why do we have the two? Or have we dissolved the one that the board had?
They're one in the same. It's just that when, when that facilities, when the Facilities Committee, it is the, it is one, when it was formed, it was made by a request from the county. When we had a, and I think that was prior to you coming on the board, we had a joint commissioner, school board meeting.
No, I was on the board.
Okay, all right. And so, and from that meeting is where the request from the commissioner's side to have a joint Facilities Committee. And so it is, it is one in the same. There's not two. There's just one.
Just the one.
And so, so my question would be, in gathering this data, in talking with our community, and looking at redistricting lines and those sorts of things, I think the, I think the purpose of the Facilities Committee that was originally formed was to look at our existing facilities, the condition of those facilities, and getting that five-year plan. That was, that was a true goal for us. This is more the board's responsibility. And it'll be our responsibility to then report to the commissioners, if we're going to write a grant, what that grant is going to consist of. Is it going to consist of a new building? Is it going to consist of renovations? Is it going to consist of combination of the two? I think it's, it's our job to inform the commissioners at that point, and then for them to, to vote on their support of it, right?
Are you telling me that the county commissioners are going to have to have a report every time we write a grant?
No, I'm talking about for the lottery grant, because there's a match.
Yes, yes. Okay, okay.
And look, and if we are, if we are building a building or renovating, that is, that is going to be, we are going to have to give them a report.
Sure.
On that, yeah.
And Ms. McKinney, that's...
That is sort of why we've been so involved with all of this through that Facilities Committee, is because we can't act autonomously. And so we have to, if it's capital, then they have to, then they're responsible for it. So we felt like it would be a quicker process for us to work for, work through committee, just like all others, just like all the other issues that we were running through committee. We felt like it would be a quicker alignment with what the county wanted, instead of for our board to be coming up with, you know, solutions, and then sitting back and sending it to them to see, you know, see when it gets on their agenda, will they, will they consider it? Those kinds of things. We just felt like it would be a quicker, a quicker way to get to the, to the end of the race, if you will. And it is, it is their, it's their committee. They wanted us to create that plan so that we weren't always in emergency mode, you know, oh, we've got an HVAC system that needs replaced. Now, we've got a, I don't even remember what that, a cooling tower, whoever knows what that is, you know, a cooling tower that's dripping, and it looks like it's raining in the school. And oh, now we've got a leaking roof over here. And so instead of, really, they wanted us to start with a five-year plan. But I believe, and Ms. Young, I'm looking to see if you're nodding, I believe we've really got to a point where we're more to like a 10, a five to a 10-year plan on some of the things. So like, things like paving projects that are super expensive, that eat into that 886 or 882, whatever that number is. So quickly, we can now plan, we know when those things are coming up, and be looking to that, be looking to that replacement. And so for Dr. Schaver's position and all of this, his is just to sell it to the, I mean, we, he's our, he's the person that we have to put out in front of the commissioners to sell our idea to, right? But they definitely want us to determine where we won't, where we won't, you know, they've said, they've made it very clear, these are some things, these are four options based off of what the architect recommended that we could possibly do, that would be the cheaper options. But then the commissioner said, now, your board's got to agree to it. You know, is this, are y'all going to agree to these? Is the community going to be happy with this? Or are you going to want something else? So go find the other. If you want something different, figure out those options and bring them back to us. Does that make sense?
It's just the four options plus the building of South End on the site. I wanted to make sure. And so the purpose of our meetings, what we wanted to get feedback on, is what about these other options? Do, what do you like about them? What, what do you have concerns with? That was really the purpose of these, these meetings. And it may, it might have not been framed as well as it could have been, but I think it's, there's some, still some value, because I think as Ms. McMichael and Ms. Rakestraw pointed out, we all, we have to, by statute, the commissioners have to approve a lottery, a grant application, as well as any of the restricted sales tax funding that we use. The only thing we almost have free rein on is the eight, of, low over eight, almost $900,000 that they give us in capital costs to take care of just ongoing needs. And I think the urgency that we felt here is that we want to get a solution to the Reevesville Elementary as soon as possible. The attractiveness of the lottery grant is we can get the money, after, if we're successful, we can get the money early, and we can start solving the problem early. So I was working towards an anticipated deadline of September. That might be pushed back now because we don't have a budget. And I think all that is predicated on budget. I'm not sure. They could, because it's a two-year budget, they could just say, well, we have, we have the money set aside for that, we're not going to increase it. So, you know, the lottery application's still going to be in September. I don't know. I haven't gotten any indication one way or the other.
You mean from the state?
From the state, from the state, yes, from the state.
And isn't it a certain number of cycles that they're going, they're only going to have this grant? And I think that's probably another...
Yeah, there are eight. This is the fourth year of a planned eight-year cycle. We have two choices. We can take care of the Reevesville Elementary options using lottery funding, or we can, in about year '28, I believe, which is indicated on the plan that Ms. McMichael talked about, we could finance a school using county and restricted sales tax money. Obviously, the most economical and the biggest bang for our buck is if we could successfully submit a lottery application. Because right now, as a tier-one county, we would pay for 5% of the cost in anything over $40 million for an elementary school.
And, so I want to make a couple of comments. One, about the meetings. I don't know that we're actually going to be asking, I mean, obviously, if people have questions, they should certainly be asking them. But I think what we're talking about is informing the community face-to-face, because we've got to have face-to-face communication with, with our families and with our teachers, and with our students. Saying to them, this is the process that we're going to go through. And help, making sure that people understand what we're doing, how we're doing it, and why we're doing it. And the why is what I want to make a comment about next. And that is that I agree, something's got to be done about Reevesville. Something's got to be done about Stoneville. Something's got to be done by, you know, especially those two schools in particular. And, but, but we've got to do our due diligence in making that decision. And I've heard that, and I'm probably going to get stones thrown at me when I say this, but I have heard that community say, we only want a school right here on this property. And I respect that. I understand it. I am compassionate about it. But what we need that community to understand is that we've got to convince all of our taxpayers in Rockingham County that that is the best use of tax dollars. Even though we're talking about writing a grant for that money, we're still going to be putting restricted sales tax. So we're still going to be putting Rockingham County money into that building, and wherever it is. And so we've got to do our due diligence. And this is doing our due diligence by looking at our population, looking at our population growth, looking at our current districts, and then taking a look at what that growth is going to look like, and its impact on our districts. So that when we say, we want to build a building right here on South Park Drive, and this is why, then we've got the backup. We've got the proof that this is why it's the best place to do it. And the reality of it is, is we don't know that it's really going to show us that. We think it is. A lot of folks are hoping that it does, and I'm totally willing to support it. But I think that's another place that our county commissioners are coming from as well, is they have to be able to sell, I'm investing your tax dollars over here in the western side of the county on this school in Reevesville, and it's because they want it there, not because it's proven that it's got to be there. Does, please help me explain that better if I did not do that, okay? Because I don't want people to think that we are making decisions behind closed doors, because we hear that a lot. I heard that before I was on the board. I've heard that since I've been on the board. We do not want people to think that that is what is occurring, because we are bending over backwards trying to make sure that does not happen. And sometimes, good intentions get, you know, get you bit right in the honey, right? So we are trying to be as transparent as we can, and we want people to ask questions. But we've got to be clear, and we've got to be, we've got to do our, sorry, Roy, we've got to do our due diligence. And I just feel like this is important for us to do. Sorry.
As far as the Superintendent, my recommendations, it really has followed kind of what we're doing with the Facilities Committee. It was first to take care of our deferred maintenance and all the issues, and have a long-range plan. My second priority was to take care of Reevesville Elementary options. And then my third priority is to take care of the Western Rockingham Elementary options vis-a-vis Stoneville, right? And possible growth. And so we have a prioritization, and that's what I, as a Superintendent, based on all the data that I had and the recommendations from previous reports, that's where I was directing. And then I was working with the Facilities Committee to, to get to that end. So that has always been my recommendation as your... So that has always been my recommendation as your superintendent, and I will continue to do that. It's just, how do we get to the Reevesville Elementary? We're a little bit stuck in the Reevesville Elementary options. But I think it's really important to note that if, even if we had to, we don't make it this year, we can take care of Reevesville Elementary options earlier with grant funding, the lottery grant funding, than we would if we had to wait until we had enough amassed in our local capital restricted sales tax to pay for it. So, I think that's the thing we need to focus on, is my urgency is in order to get to that lottery grant application. However, if, if we're not ready, we're not ready, and we'll move on to the next year, and we'll make sure we have a real strong application. We have the benefit of seeing three years of successful applications, and a lot of it is combining schools. That, that scores higher. And that's not the only thing. I think the age of the school, there's lots of other things that make the location in South Park, South Park Drive a possible location, would be funded, I just made no sense whatsoever. Let me take a step back and rewind, 'cause I'm listening to myself and I don't even know what I'm saying. Okay, so, let me take a step back. The replacing South End will score high on the age of the facility and other factors. The one area it won't score high on, are we combining schools? I think if we can go and say, here's growth patterns, here are projections, that's gonna make our application stronger.
That's right.
And so, I think it's important to do this work, I just, because I want the best for our students, as every board member does, and all the staff do. There's that urgency. And I think that's where we're running against, that, that tension between urgency and making sure that we can get everybody on board. And, you know, democracy, when, if you really are transparent, it can be a little bit of a messy process, because people only have little bits of information. And it's my job to try to weave together all these bits and pieces of information to create a tapestry, which I failed to do earlier, I think I'm doing a better job now, I hope, and, and present it to our community. And so, the purposes of the meeting, as I saw them, was, hey, we know the Reevesville community, especially in South End, would like to see a new South End built on the site. Here are some other options we'd just like to your feedback on. And we purposely started at South End because we thought that might be the most controversial, that where we'd get the most comments in, in turnout. And we did, but it was helpful, you know? I, I don't mind some of the, some of the questions, because it helps us frame our argument better. At Moss Street, we're gonna still present the options, but I think we're gonna do a better job framing it. And I'm also gonna add, I thought, Ms. McKinney, you did a great, you gave me a, an idea on, like, kind of what types of meetings, what's the best way for us to get feedback, how do you want us to get feedback? And so, that's, we'll certainly add that as we're going through this. And I think we need to frame it, and this is the first step of a multi-step process, that we're gonna continue to get feedback, just like we did when we took back over Moss Street. You know, there were a lot of concerns from the community about, hey, what are you doing and how are you configuring? At the end of the day, I think it helped the board come up with the, the best decision. It helped, it helped me as the superintendent come up with the best decision, and I hope the community sees that, that we are actually getting feedback and we're listening to their feedback. To your point, we really are not doing things behind closed doors, and there's always that, there's always that, what are they doing? And so, I, I appreciate that, Ms. McKinney. I don't disagree that there are, there's some, some horses carts before the horse is at least a wheel. But I think it's important to also say, hey, we're considering these options, and we only settled on the options for the Facilities Committee the Friday before the Monday board meeting. And so, you know, I, I, I think I'll own that, I should've just sat down and said, let me walk you through all these options, and, you know, before we presented to the board on the Monday. But again, it was all in service of trying to get to that September, anticipated September deadline for the lottery application.
Mr. Wyatt wants to say something.
Okay. I do wanna say something. We have done a good job in totally confusing the public, but I wanna, I wanna break it down to really simple. We can build a $40 million school that'd cost the county $2 million. If the county can't afford $2 million for a $40 million school, something is wrong. We have made it way too confusing. Built it at South End, forget it, keep rolling.
Okay. I wanna thank Ms. Rakestraw and Ms. Michael for coming up with a direction that we can follow. And I think with redistricting, that's fine, but we're gonna have to look at transfers too, because if you redistrict, then people are gonna say, well, I'm gonna put in a transfer to go here, I'm gonna, and that's gonna have to, you know, that's causing a lot of our problems. I've heard Wentworth has a whole lot of kindergarten children that are wanting to transfer in and they're wanting a new teacher. And, you know, that's causing a lot of our overcrowding at different schools. So therefore, we're gonna have to look at our transfer policy also, if we redistrict, you know, because that's gonna be, that could be a problem.
Yeah, I agree. I think we could definitely look at that transfer policy and stop all transfers K-12.
Yeah, it used to be just teachers' children. When I was teaching, could transfer, and now it's everybody's transferring here, there, and everywhere. And I think, you know, we've got to stop that some way.
Well, we very much are looking at capacity. As soon as I heard that same thing, Ms. Austin, I, I did contact Dr. Corcoran, and so, and we think we're fine as far as capacity at Wentworth. And a lot of those transfers are teachers' children. It's not, we're not having community transfers. I checked on that with Dr. Corcoran on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, she got that information for me. And of course, we will do whatever. I would also say, though, we're in an era of school choice, and I would be cautious of the board to do a whole lot to restrict some choice. I think that's where we are. And we don't want, I want to be part of that choice, if I can.
The county commissioners wanted us to vote on a process this morning, so, what do you all recommend that we had to move forward? Is the Facilities Committee, everything's still intact, right?
Well, I don't think they've agreed to resume meeting. We've got those, you know, we've got that, we've got the plan, that five-year plan, like Dr. Schnefer was talking about, for just major facility needs, like tracks and tennis courts and roofs, HVAC systems, paving, that kind of stuff. And I think that everybody feels really good about that. However, I, I do think that we will, you know, we will move along a little faster if we can have access to talk to economic development, like we've done with that, and she created that Google Map overlay, and we, you know, I think we could, and talking about the data that Dr. Schnefer mentioned, you know, the, the numbers, that formula that we were given, I do believe, based off of the type of home, the formula could be different. But we only have access to one formula. So, if we could, so, and the reason I point that out is based off of, based off of addresses for students within the Reevesville area, the, the apartments on Longdale are providing less than 30 kids into our school district, period, regardless of where they're going, or to any schools. So, I think that when we're looking at, there's a lot of growth, but some of it's apartments, we need to consider, we might not, there might be a different formula other than 2.3 for the apartments that we're seeing, that we think will be more towards the Williamsburg zone. But also, if you're looking at, you know, 2,000 to 3,500 square foot houses, that formula also might be very different than, I believe there was a mobile home, a mobile home park put in the, on the east side of Reevesville. Well, that formula's gonna be very different versus, I don't know, maybe 1,200 to 1,800 square foot homes. And so, I just think that we need to, that's where we're gonna really need somebody like Cropper or, or Ed, or, I don't even know the names of the other groups. And that's really why we reached out to economic development to begin with, was because those folks were not available, and we just needed help, you know, figuring out how to look at the numbers. I think it's been beneficial, I hope that we would be able to continue that. You know, we went to committee to keep us from all having to participate in every, in every single meeting. I think the commissioners would like to hear us say, you know, you said that the meetings are still back on, and I think that that got us a long ways. But we need to, we need to be able to agree to a process that we're gonna follow. Are we going to, are we gonna make a recommendation and take our recommendation back to the Facility Committee? And then come back to us to approve? And then they'll, they're, they are gonna have the last vote on any of it, unfortunately. I mean, that's, we just don't get to act autonomously.
Right, right. What do you think the process should look like?
Well, I've just been taking some notes. I'll just jump out here and talk a little bit. Y'all know I'm not shy. So, what, and what I've been hearing is, we need to continue with the community meetings, we need to get, we need to gather the information. So, what if we continue with the, with the meetings with the expectation that those meetings will explain what we're getting ready, what we're gonna do? Because I do think, I do think we need to stick and stick to getting this information. And so, we need to let the community know, this is what we're gonna do. These are some options that we are looking at, that have come, that we've come up with, these five options, or these four plus building, I mean, that is five, these five options that we've come up with, and where these options came from, how, how we came up with those. And get, you know, if community has questions, if community has any kind of concerns, maybe they, maybe somebody has some, some thought that we hadn't even thought of. Lord knows, we don't have all the answers, right? And so, and, and that be our process, letting the community know what we're doing and how we're doing it. And then on our July 8th meeting, we vote on a group that is going to help us with that A-through-C process, that A-through-C steps. And then, and then we move forward, of course, with that information. And then, along the way, we can update the existing Facilities Committee on what, what we're doing. We can let them know about this A-through-C steps, which I have gone over this with one of our commissioners anyway. And, and he was very supportive of, yes, that's the information we need. But along the way, updating the Facilities Committee, so that, so that our commissioners are kept in the loop. And even if that's just a phone call, I'm okay with that too, but it needs to be documented. We've got to document our process. And whether it's with the community or with our commissioners, it's gotta be documented so that, so that we can go back and look at what we've done and what we've said we're gonna do and how we've said we're gonna do it. And that, this is why I think, and I'm gonna just interject this, this is why strategic planning is so detrimental to a school system, to any organization. And if, without a strategic plan, we are left floundering, and that's what we've been doing for the past, I feel like, I feel like, five years. But, but, we've got to, we've got to put this in writing, vote on it, and share it. And that's all we'll say.
Do you wanna put that into a motion?
Sure. Do I need to restate that?
Word for word.
Word for word.
I think we got it.
We'll have to get Roy to help that with that. Yeah.
Okay, any questions about the motion?
So, may I, can I help? Any questions for you?
Right, okay.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So, the, what I heard is that we follow the recommendations of, of getting a, a capacity study for the next five to 10 years, go through, start and initiating, redistricting, and hold the community meetings to focus on explaining the process, the options that we're looking at, A-through, and getting feedback on that, asking for other options. And then one thing, if you don't mind, I was gonna add in, and then what are our next steps? To say that, what are we gonna do from here? So that is what I heard in a nutshell. So we're proposing that we do the, the capacity study, the redistricting, and hold the meetings as explained, as directed.
And I think we need to clarify, does our board want to continue working alongside the commissioners through the Facility Committee, so that if things come up, we can go back to see if we're gonna get quick approval? Do y'all wanna continue to do that, or not?
Absolutely.
I think we should, of course.
So, so, so continue working with commissioners.
I think we should, don't you?
Do A and B, and hold the meetings.
And I, I have one question. I know there's a deadline on this, September or whatever. Can we do all this and get it in by September? We need to think deadline.
No, probably not.
No, but my initial conversations with the folks that do this is, we cannot do that by September, though I have told all of them. And so, they're trying to see, we already know or Ed is off the table by September. I have yet to hear from the other two.
Okay, do we have an option whereby we can get a proposal in, in time for the state to consider the lottery grant?
Do we have a way of doing that?
Yes.
So, I, I'll be honest here, we can, we could certainly ask to do a grant for South End. In doing that, I don't feel like, this is my opinion, okay? I don't feel like we have the stuff to make a solid proposal. Nor do I know that we've got, we have proven to get the support from the commissioners for a solid proposal. And so, with that, I would be reluctant to put out a proposal because it's, it's been my understanding, and you might tell me this is completely wrong, it's been my understanding that to put in an application and not get requests for it, you lessen your chances the more you apply. Is that true or not true? I don't know where I heard that.
I, I haven't heard that. You can apply multiple, for multiple projects, right? There's no cap. I think the, the scorecard is pretty transparent, and we score well in, in all categories. The only one that we don't score well in is the one that I went over earlier about the, the combining of schools, that, that's one of the criterion. But it's not the only one.
And I, and I also feel like, that if we do, if we do that, I just, I just feel like the, the information has to be there first. I don't feel, I don't feel confident about putting a proposal together when we don't, when we haven't gotten the information that it's the best place. I totally, and I don't know if this is where you're going with this, I mean, I totally agree that those children need to be in a different setting. That school is just not, it is just not in good condition.
I think, I think we're making too big a deal about it, honestly. I think we need the school, there's no question we need the school, we got the kids there. Take care of the kids that we've got, that we know we've got. We know we've got kids that are filling school. Go ahead and make the proposal, and whatever it takes to put this grant together, do it.
And so, to answer your question, we, we are ready if we need it to. I think we can put together a application, that, a solid application, because we've been working with Mosley Architecture...
Right.
...for a while. I think where we're, where we would not, the, the issue would be, is I don't think we've convinced our commissioners yet.
Oh, I'm sure of that.
And that's, that's the, that's, that's where we are. I think, I, I do wanna say, from being in the committee, and please stop me, that nobody's taking any options off the table. And I think it's, as Ms. McMichael and Ms. Rakestraw said, they just wanna make sure that, I've, I've heard multiple times that, you know, while we understand the need for in the Reevesville area, this has to involve the whole county. One of the things we considered with the Facilities Committee is a survey, and they wanted to make sure that it was out for the whole county. And so, I think that is the work that we have to do. And my hope is that if we do A and B, that that will give the data. You know, our last, our last study was in 2022, and a lot has changed, and even to your point, Ms. McMichael, we're learning new things about how they put, how they designate the number of kids per units, right? The last information we got at a retreat from P-Tech was that more kids tend to come out of apartment buildings, because that's where people are, you know, starters. And then, you know, they're waiting till they can get an affordable home. So I think our best bet, we're gonna have the highest... So I think our best bet, where we're going to have the highest, is in more affordable housing to get the kids. And the more, the higher end housing, we're not going to get as many kids from there. It was my understanding. Ms. Young, was that what you heard at the P-Tech meeting?
Could I add one thing to it? The, I heard you say that we have to be combined, that the one thing we're not doing well on the scorecard was combining schools, which was one of the, which was one of the things that brought Mall Street into the discussion to have a combined school. But, you know, really, once we start looking at redistricting, like Clark's Preserve, based off of the number that we were given from economic development, I know I said this number last meeting, but it's 982 kids just from Clark's Preserve alone. Well, that's more than all the kids that we have in Reedsville.
That would be by far the.
Right, and so that's its own elementary school. And so, right, and so, you know, we just, we just want to be, in looking to redistrict, you know, none of us are professionals at that, but we can certainly look at a map and see that Clark's Preserve is, it's zoned to Monroton, but it's closer, I mean, unless DOT has told somebody that, somebody, if somebody has the knowledge that they're going to build a road through the woods to connect McCoy Road to Monroton, three Clark's Preserve, nobody's come forward with, to the school district for that information. So that development is going to be much closer to South End. And then Sherwood Glen is 1.7 miles from Mall Street. I mean, it just makes no sense to bust them somewhere else. And so even Gibbs Lake Road is going to be close to Mall Street. So we just need to, we just need to have somebody who has a little better professional knowledge other than.
And the trends. I think that's, because just with anything, you know, changes are occurring at light speed.
And we need to make sure we're building the right-sized building for these students.
Yeah, so we don't have to go through, redistricting is an often painful process, only more, less painful than closing schools, which we don't want to do either of those things if we can help it. I do want to clarify, Ms. McMichael, that is just one of the scoring options. And, and what I've looked at is, we've had a lot of really low wealth counties that have needed to combine schools just because of the age and all that. But it's not the sole criterion, and I think we would have a strong application even without combining schools. I think we'd have a strong application either way. I was just making sure everybody understood that that was one of the criteria.
But I think adding on to Williamsburg, adding on to Monroton, and potentially adding on to Mall Street, instead of closing and combining schools. But the redistricting and then adding on shows effort to do some combining.
Right.
Sorry, I didn't say that very well the first go around.
Well, there's no option that, that would take students away from South End. There's no reason not to build a school. If you can build it on state lottery funds at 5%, you're nuts not to. And they talk about county budget. I know the county budget is, I've got it on my phone, $2 million is going to be a drop in the bucket. And the farther we postpone this, the greater the price, the greater the need. Go ahead and submit the application, and if it fails, it fails.
I do want to point out that anything that we combine would come from restricted sales tax money. So it's, it's sales tax our community has spent at Lowe's, Walmart, our local stores, and that's where this money is coming from.
That's right.
And it can only be for the facilities. It's designated for purpose.
Yeah, but that money, if we spend the 2%, that money would still be available to do other things.
And that's why we did the plan, the financing plan. So we do have, we do have some flexibility with our financing. We could either finance that money, or we could slow down on some of the pay go projects. And, or, you know, if we're good at spending and we're economical, which Ms. Young has been doing, that provides more money. So I believe right now we do have the funds to pay for a match.
And I also think that if we can make some decisions today, we can move forward and with the, with the effort to get on their, their agenda for an approval, they just want to see us, they just want to see us start with redistricting before we submit that grant. But if we are agreeing to do that, that grant application takes a long time. Built construction takes a long time. So maybe we can, I mean, I hear what you're saying about.
Exactly. I was elected as a school board member. I am a school board member. I am not a county commissioner. I don't look into their business. I realize that, that we have to have their approval to spend $2 million, but I do, I do not see where the hangup is on spending $2 million on a $40 million building.
And, and this thought just popped into my brain as you were saying that, and as you were saying what you were saying. Yeah, oh dear.
Oh boy.
We will have time to gather this data in the process of writing the grant, getting the grant, and getting things geared up. So we will, we will have an idea of what we need to do, where we need to do it, once we hear back from that grant. I mean, do we have to lock into a location and?
Yeah, we have to submit a specific plan. We can't just say we need it for X purpose. It has to be for, so, and again, I just want to make sure the board heard that when I spoke with the folks, I'd be still trying to meet that September, possible September deadline. I did say, if you could give us just a high level, and, and we could possibly present that to the commissioners, right? We know Or Ed can't do that, but I thought, I think Cropper may be able to do that. And I think the other person, Todd LeFries, may be able to do that as well.
There's your process.
If we gather the information and go on and do the grant and be ready, do you think the commissioners would be, would they be okay if we, if we're talking about redistricting, which we will probably, we will have to do, but also go ahead with the grant so we can have the school also in place if needed?
And Mosley, Mosley has looked at it, the architects have looked at it. They know what we need. It's not going to take them. They've probably already got their plans drawn.
Yes, I do think that, I do think that what you're saying is right.
When was the last time we did all this? It's been a couple of years, a couple of years ago.
It was February of '22. I went back and looked at all the.
I thought you meant 2019.
The February 12th and February 22nd of '22 is when we had, when the board, the opportunity came aboard. And again, same type of scenario, right? It's, it, the Dr. Shotwell and Dr. Parks had just gotten the information. It was due in March, right? And so they presented it as soon as they got it. And then there was kind of the rushed timeline to get there. And so, you know, I went back and looked at both those meetings.
And the county commissioners mixed that.
That's one thing that makes it so frustrating. Are we going to visit this every two years? Are we going to go ahead bite the bullet and put it in their park? You know, we know what we want.
Right.
Put it in their, in their park. I don't want to put them on the spot, but they put us on the spot.
We've talked about this ever since I've been on the board. We've talked about.
Well, and I believe that to the point of having to prove that South End sits on a location, now that we do know.
Exactly.
The acreage, we're not looking at less than half, we're looking at three-fourths of the recommendation. You know, I think that it's hard to argue that it's not a good location because it's been there for 100 years. And then for five of the last 10 years, it serves as the only Rockingham County Schools' public school for Reedsville. I think it's, I think that's hard, it's going to be a hard argument to, to say that that is not a good location.
I feel confident, no more opposition than I imagine that we would have that it wouldn't go through. I cannot imagine it not making their approval.
Well, could we put that in the, in the process? You know, let's make a motion to go ahead with redistricting and use the company that comes in that can help us quickly and.
May I make a suggestion? I think we need to get the information from the people we've contacted before we make a motion to even find out what, and which is July 8th, before we find out what is, what's happening. You have already directed me to hold the meetings, so we, I don't need a motion for that. And, and I think, I think there's just a couple of unknowns that I would suggest that we, let me get those, those proposals in to present to you, and then I think you can make a stronger motion.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, that sounds good. Does that sound good to everybody?
Okay.
July 8th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of talking. We're talking this to death. It's time to, we need to execute.
Right.
We need to execute.
We do.
But when you execute, you're clearly not being transparent.
We can be transparent, we can execute. We've been talking about redistricting since January of '23.
We have.
2018.
Well, since I've been on the board. Everybody says since I've been, since I've been on board, we've been talking about redistricting. We have, we have beat this poor horse to death. Let's, let's execute something.
Get her down.
Can I say one thing just because it's public? We will be very transparent with redistricting. I don't want people to get, we will, we'll definitely have a process for that. I know how that works, so we will be very transparent with redistricting.
Stotson Hunt wanted me to give you an update also on the new telemedicine clinic at Mall Street. The CMA has been hired. She's in place. Their nurses have been to Greensboro and observed the clinics there, and she said they're on go. So we're really excited about that. Philip, can you read the statement so we can go into closed session?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I'd like to move the board going to closed session to discuss confidential personal information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1 and 6, and to consult with our attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Do we want to move right into closed session?
Let's roll.
Okay.